Sid can't hear you, so.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order by saying. And what I do believe is we must like the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, welcome to the special meeting, um, county commissioner meeting on Friday. This special meeting is being conducted to discuss the Welsh funny jail project. Um, we do have Sid Samuel on Zoom in case anyone has questions for him. So just so you know, Sid's there and Sid, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, all right. Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us and we'll just have you available for questions for now.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, with that, I'm going to have Ron come up and we'll start. Afternoon, Ron.
Good afternoon, everybody. So back at it, um. It is the jail committee's recommendation that we go forward with option two revised. This is the new plan that that we worked on and it is the twenty-three million. Six hundred eighty-seven thousand and five hundred and twenty-two dollar plan that was um given to you last meeting.
And this is still for a forty-six bed jail?
It is.
Um, it's only been a week, so I'm sure everybody remembers all this this event, but. As discussed at the last commission meeting, it was requested that we take a week to think about this before we make the vote because it is a big decision. So. I guess without, um, does anyone have any questions? Or comments? Paul?
And I guess I pretty much told everybody last week how I felt about the sales tax and having. Those feelings, I decided I wanted to put together something for you guys to consider. We're contemplating going to state radio. Um, with our dispatch center. I think if that is something we're interested in doing or something we're considering doing, I think it would make a lot of sense to use those funds. To offset the increase in sales tax. We haven't had enough time to really narrow those numbers down, in my opinion, um. But. Based on my conversations with Darren and state radio, he estimates our savings to be between five hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fifty thousand. A year. So I would like us to consider that as 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 an option for the financing. I I want to build a jail. I think this is a good. Uh, Plan B. But I I want to do it with the least amount of, um. It sales tax increases we can. So I just wanted to put that out there.
I guess I will make a motion to proceed with Plan B with the. Record percent sales tax up to three-quarter percent. And how we juggle the. Options around afterwards, but I think we've got to get on board and get this project moving. You look at the inflationary factor waiting a year. And I mean, it's just going to keep eating up any savings we've come up with. But I'll make that motion to proceed with the jail program that I've discussed.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Before we move on to discussion?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any any discussion? Paul?
I'm not talking about waiting a year. With my idea, I don't. We wouldn't need another vote. The resolution said up to three-quarter percent. I'd like to limit it at a quarter percent. With no, so there would be no new property tax and just a quarter percent sales tax and I. Based on. What the savings are at the dispatch side, that that's that's the wild card and I. Understand that that number isn't really ready for prime time. I get that. That's why I'm asking for more time on that and I I'm not asking for six months or a year. Um, we need more time to understand what the difference between what Darren Anderson is saying and what our staff is saying. Because I don't get it. I don't understand.
Right, there's, you know, we've been provided. Two different numbers, the one from there and then we've been provided the number from Crystal as well and there's a. Widespread there, so we do need to get to the bottom of that. But that's not the only thing we need to get to the bottom of. We haven't even taken a vote or made a decision that we're going to. To state radio yet. So I mean, first we've got to get the numbers drilled down and then we have a lot of research to do. Um, and then it'll have to come to a vote. So I think, you know, our motion is for up to three-quarter percent. We can certainly reduce that in the future because of how it is worded. But Ernie, you said something?
I guess I was thinking like Paul and I don't really want to hold back either, but if those are numbers and we decide to go to state radio. Maybe we can get down to a quarter cent tax, you know, and and it's it's up to. And I'm not in favor of going to the three-quarters or have to, but um in in lieu of time, I guess. Move forward with this, see what our savings would be in the state radio. You know, because still you're, like I said, you're hearing a lot of numbers and I don't, I'm not behind it all and I don't know where they're coming from and I don't understand them, but. I I look at that inflation area and everything else and I mean. Did I? I don't know if you said it or somebody last week when we were talking about just having a meeting and maybe two weeks instead of a week and we were talking about how much that puts us behind the default. So I guess being that said, and furthermore, I uh. I guess after the meeting last week, I was plastered on somebody Facebook page and it said contact Ernie Barta and all this, all the commissioners. For further, and I said further information. Well, lo and behold, guess what? Not one person called, not one person texted, not one person anything. So what does that say? Are they happy with this making decision? I don't know. To me, if somebody had this against it, they should have called me, whatever. I looked on every email, every page, county, my my personal one, nobody called. And I don't know about you, your names are on the tube, but I said, you know what? Why aren't people calling? So you mean there's not much opposition out there?
I was contacted personally over the force to proceed with it and get it done. I didn't have any email, any texts or anything. But where I was around on the fourth and and. You know, granted, I'm talking to people I know, but everybody was in favor of proceeding with what we can do. They seem to need for the jail. And uh, we've got to get it going. The biggest question is what do we do as on course? And my answer to that was, we're going to deal with the jail now and get this project moving. And try to do what we can with a law enforcement center. When when the problem arrives, that will arrive. Yes.
And I had the same conversations. If people didn't reach out to me, I I asked them what they thought and they were the same. You know, if you can proceed with the jail with the sales tax do it, um, we need a jail, we need safety in our county, so.
Um, and I brought this up at last meeting, um, too, I think. You know, for someone who has a business in this city and to know that the. The the last meeting was three percent sales taxes what it was going to be. I support. Hundred percent of building the jail, but I am also on the same realm of if if it was, it will be point two-five percent sales tax, then I'm. Much, I'm in favor of that. If it's points, a point seven-five percent sales tax that puts the city of Grafton in the highest sales tax bracket in the state. And not, I mean, from from owning business here, from from the econ, you know, the economic standpoint of it, of what it can can do, um. And and I have had a big part of the brunt when it's looking at this dispatch and state radio, which I will be honest. I I don't feel that that is a hundred percent our role as commissioners when it comes to the amount of work that has been done in this department, looking at everything. There has been. I I can't even count the number of hours and I took this job on to do the right thing. I want that department and I want to do what's best for our county, more importantly, our employees and and what we do going forward. It is a huge task, so, um. I I do think that we, there's processes and systems that need to be improved on that to assist. Uh, when it comes to commissioners and those of us that are trying to do the right thing, but yet see this amount of, we can only ask department heads to do so much. They're going to give us what they give us, but it's our role ultimately to make the decision. So. That is factored in as well and I understand timing. Timing has never been good with this. We need to proceed, I agree. But I'm also not in favor of just. You know, having it out there. Well, it's the point seven-five, we'll do that if we have to, we'll maybe try to get it down. I I would like to see it. Mean a little bit more defined than than keeping it up in the air and hoping.
I guess I am, I'm also looking at this from the standpoint of, uh, not that if I'm in favor of the point seven-five or up to point seven-five percent tax. I'm looking at the vote of the citizens. The citizens voted and they said they wanted us to use the up to point seven-five percent sales tax. They voted yes for that. That's where I'm looking at this is what can we do? Can we solve our problem with the sales tax? And if in the future. If in the future we decide to go with state radio and there is a substantial cost savings, then yes. I mean, at that time, we can look at it and see what we can do to reduce the sales tax. I mean, we want to take as little as we can of that sales tax, but. The people did vote and they did say they passed the sales tax portion.
Really, so I can't remember what Kelly said, even if we pass the sales tax, it wouldn't go into effect till next. What is it, October or something? Well, by then we might. I I don't know if it it mean we have three-quarters and we up to. Hopefully by then we've got a decision on our, on our, uh. Nine-one-one and all that, that we could say and say, well, let's just take a quarter cent dollars, you know?
I do think our up to is kind of our saving grace in this.
Yeah, I I don't want to charge you more than what we have to, but if you can get it down to a quarter, great.
Right. Paul?
I'm not sure once you implement that three-quarters on sales tax, I'm not sure you can legally just call the state and say lower it to a quarter. I I don't know the. That. Um, because the. The resolution says up to three-quarters and once you implement that three-quarters. You've implemented that three-quarters. I don't know if you can arbitrarily change that after fact. I don't. Know the answer to that question. It's probably something we should know before. Moving forward, but. The last number I got from the auditor's office in. Terms of savings, uh, and again, this this is not a final, this is all draft, was was three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
In savings for?
For, um, going to state radio.
Okay. So now we've got three different numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And and that number I think is low because just from the back of the napkin, there's seven dispatchers in the budget. If you lay off six dispatchers at an average salary of fifty thousand dollars, that's three hundred thousand in salaries. Plus another hundred thousand in benefits. So you're at four hundred thousand there and you haven't done anything with the radio maintenance and the contracts and.
But Paul, can I just say? Will you retain any of those employees? Because we need a nine-one-one coordinator. We need someone to answer the administrative calls.
Either just dispatch positions?
Right, so we need to switch those positions over to say a nine-one-one coordinator and. And someone to, um, do the administrative calls. So what I'm saying is. Yeah, you maybe lay off six dispatchers, but how many new positions do you have to add by going to state?
Okay, well, we have a nine-one-one coordinator now, so that's already in the budget. And there's one dispatch salary left here, so if you wanted a an administrative person, that's still there as well.
Okay, you didn't take that one.
I did take that. I took out six of the seven.
Okay.
And I'm just doing back of the napkin stuff here to understand that three hundred and fifty-five thousand isn't. That's, that's not the right number, in my opinion. So. And I don't know what the right number is, but I'm perfectly willing to admit that. But when I have someone like Darren Anderson who's done this many times around the state, he knows our system well. And he's telling me five fifty to seven fifty, I have to. I have to dig till I find where he's getting those numbers. And we're just that far off and I. It's a very complex budget.
But Darren, Darren.
Given we're maxed out on our mills right now. And with grand works going to what, two-thirty a bed now? Or juveniles?
Juveniles.
It's a hundred.
Two sixty, I think they went to. They said in the paper, it's two sixty for juveniles.
I think it was a hundred and. Thirty or thirty, thirty about it for adults. And we're still at least two years before we could use this new facility. We're getting maxed out on just trying to keep you guys funded. But I, you know, the the savings in the state radio and and every other place that we could cut. I think it's going to be up in a hurry with just trying to keep everything rolling here. But. As much as I would like to say we can save on that sales tax, I don't see that there. I think we're going to use every bit of it. And. Everybody I've talked to and the people that voted are good with that. I had a number of people that voted for the.
Property.
Property tax also. And that's how much they wanted to see this jail project go through.
Right.
And I have also had, because I've I've made it clear to you that interpretation of this vote matters because I also, I don't interpret it the same way in that. We told everyone both had to pass in order for this to go through. So the conversations that have happened with me have been. They did both pass. That's what's come back different than what that they did both pass, so why why are we proceeding? So it is how you interpret the way that it was presented.
And I don't disagree with you. That that was a difficult one for me as well, but I do rely. On the expertise of our state's attorney and the legal counsel that was involved and they said we were allowed to use. The vote for the sale of tax. So I guess that's what I'm leaning on is. We have been instructed that we are allowed to move forward, even though we did ask for a yes vote on both and a no, or a no vote on both. Um, the fact that the people split the vote. I guess they gave us an opportunity that we didn't even know we had until after research by our our legal counsel, so.
Remember, we see it as we had for that plan of forty-two million dollars. That's the way I interpreted. Now we've come back with a Plan B at just about half that. Then we can make it work.
And we received lots of questions on what's your Plan B? What's your Plan B? Well. We were forced to come up with a Plan B, right? Because of the vote being split. So here's our Plan B. With Plan B, we can solve our issue of transport. We can make it a safe colony. We can have our forty-six bed jail. We're not getting everything we wanted. We sacrificed a lot with this. But we are able to take care of the main issue, so. All right, I have a motion on the table and a second. I am going to call for the vote. Annie?
Yes.
Ernie?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
Paul?
No.
Myself, yes, motion carried. Thank you, Ron, for all the time and effort you have put into this and everyone on the jail committee. It's really appreciated. I know it was a difficult decision. We'll move forward. Okay. So with that, we do have Sid on the phone, on the Zoom call and Sid, I'm just going to ask at this time if you have anything to add or if you could help us. With what maybe our next steps are, um, on proceeding, or if you have anything to offer at all, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So I don't know if you have the packet of information that I had handed out last time, but I kind of stopped about midway through. The presentation because we were running into some conflict in regards to whether or not there was really a project there and I didn't want to. Proceed with anything until after you guys had made that decision, but. Basically, what you need to do now is you need to engage architecture, um, and you can determine how you want to deliver the project. And and we'll kind of talk about that in a minute, but. Um, you have went through a process previously. Um, I know that there was discussion last time about there needs to be an RFP. And we can kind of explain what's going on. We went through a process the, uh, when we first got on board in regards to architects and and construction management, things like that. So I I think you've went through that process, but you can go through it again if you choose. Um, and we'll talk about that and the timing of all of that here in a little bit. So there was a a page. Specifically to project delivery methods because this always becomes a question mark. Uh, do you have that in front of you or?
Can you just give us one minute, Sid? Um, I, I'm on my way, I guess. I didn't, I took it home. Does anyone have one I could share?
I'm looking at these pages, I mean.
Yeah, this one very good.
Okay, I think we're set now.
Okay. So as a. As a board, you have different ways in which you can deliver a project. You hire the architect. And you could pick three different, roughly three different ways in which you can have it. You can work with a constructor, um, and we'll start with the first one and that's general contractor. So in that scenario. Um, you would hire the architect. The architect would complete the design in its entirety. You would send it out to the open market and. General contractors would choose to either bid on it or not bid on it, but you would receive one big number. From a general contractor after the project had been bid. So underneath of there are pros and cons of each of these. Uh, the pros would be is that you've got a competitive price, right? You've got uh multiple. Contractors potentially taking a look at it. Uh, you would have your competition there. You'd be able to show that. Um, you would see, um, the clear design and bidding process. So you'd you'd have your architect. You'd work with them to the end. You'd bid it out. You could show that to the public. The cons to it is there's no input during design, so as you've kind of had that all along here, as you've been working with. Um, the same as group, you've been working with Elavatus. They've been doing the designs and we've been kind of guiding from a construction management perspective, right? You've had us. Had both both groups working on your behalf. In a general contracting hard bid, you would not have that. You would have the architect, he would finish the design, send it out for bid and. That's what that would be. Um, you can't control the experience of the general contractor, so if they can provide a bond, uh, to bid the project. Uh, whether they've built a jail before or not, if they need the work and they bid it and they're low. They're going to build the project. Uh, you don't really have a whole lot of control in that scenario. And then the last there is just. The contractors looking out for the contractor, the architect is is looking out for themselves and looking out for you. Um, they're really, the contractor is there to make money, period. And and rightfully so. Um, there's a construction manager at risk. Uh, we've seen this delivery model. Uh, we've actually. We've actually done all three of these, but, um, there's a lot of, a lot of groups that are looking at construction manager at risk and what it is, is it brings the construction manager in right away. So as the design team would start designing, uh, the construction manager would work side by side with them, similar to what you've experienced so far. Uh, they provide a guaranteed maximum price, which is pretty nice. The issue is, is that you start losing the transparency. That to me is the big deal when you look at construction management at risk is. They bring their contractors in, they get the pricing and all transparency, once the number is in there is gone. Um, I do like the idea of having them on on your side of the fence during design. There's a risk factor, so typically a CM at risk is going to be more expensive than and then. Like construction manager agent, and we'll get to that in a second, but. It's about who's holding the risk. And who, how much do we want to pay for that risk? And that's that's totally up to you as a board. Um, but there's a cost associated to that, holding that risk. The last one there is the construction manager agent. Uh, same thing, they're going to come in, they're going to work side by side with you, similar to what we have done as well. Um, when this goes out for bid, they typically, or what we have done is we break it up into bid packages depending on what's going on in the area. So if you have a. For example, an earthwork contractor that is capable of doing the work and it's right there in Grafton. Um, we help customize bid packages so that we get the local, uh, contractors involved. Uh, under the other two methods, you may or may not get local participation. It kind of depends on where they. What happens there. The big thing with the CMA. Is that the transparency is there. So from bid day, every time there's a change order, anything that's going on, you guys are very well aware of what's what's happening. That information gets presented to you typically once a month when the bill comes in and it's time to pay bills. There's an update from your construction manager, uh, explaining what's going on. Where change orders have been, getting approvals, where's your contingencies? They really become more of an advocate. For the owner. The cons to it, let's talk about that, is is that your construction manager is writing those contracts on your behalf. So you're contracting. With various contractors versus one contract. That that typically is where. Uh, owners, if they're going to go to a construction manager at risk, they want one contract versus multiples. Um, and frankly, if you don't have a construction manager agent that has done this before, that's the avenue you should probably go. Um, if you've got somebody who's built jails, has done this process, um. What you're doing is you're hiring a, I call it the hired gun. Uh, you're paying them a fee to do so. It's usually a little less than what you're paying on the construction manager. Uh, and they are managing that entire process for you. That really comes down to the highlights of that. I can answer specific questions to it. Um, I'm. I can give you my opinion, um, but I'd rather have your questions first before I go throwing an opinion out there on the table.
Paul?
So when do we decide whether we're going to go? Construction, general contractor or construction manager risk? When do we make that decision?
Frankly, um. Knowing what I know, I would do it right away. I would do it at the same time I was doing my architect, because if you're going to take the. The value add that you get with the construction management side is that they're helping with the design process, they're helping with the estimating during the design process. That's where their value is. If you don't, if you don't want that value, then you're going to go to the to the general contractor. Method, which you would do at the end of the design and you would just bid it out. And that's when you would engage at the contractor. But if you're going to do one of these CM. Delivery methods. I would suggest that you do that right away, so you take full advantage of that value that they bring to the table.
Sure.
Amy? Sid, um, I have a question in regards, you talked about the updates for the jail construction at commission meetings and how often. So are you saying that? The, that the general contractor and the CMA are, there wouldn't be as many updates would change as far as how often we would hear?
Yeah, because the general contractor. Yeah, because the general contractor itself. Uh, isn't responsible for providing you updates. He's provence, you know, they'd be responsible for building a building. They're responsible for their back pocket. And as quickly as they can build it, however they want to build it, as long as it meets the specifications that have been outlined by the architect, that's their job. Cause they're there to make money. That that's what it's all about for them. And it's not a bad thing. It's just that's the delivery model and that's kind of what what pushes it. The other, the other way. Or excuse me, the other thing with the general contractor. Is if you really think of the contract, the contractual methods, they're bidding off the plans that are that they're looking at on bid day. So if there's any disparity in those plans. If there's anything going, you know, that isn't quite right in there, you're gonna start getting a lot of change orders and it it can create an adversarial. Relationship between an owner and a general contractor. And the and of course, the architect. It's not my favorite delivery model, if you can't tell that already by how I've been explaining things, but. Um, it's definitely an option for you guys and you have, you know, you can do that. Um, I just. I don't, I don't see the value there. Except for a low price, that that's the absolute low price is what you would get out of that model.
And the difference between the at risk or at agent?
Yep.
So the the at agent, apparently that construction manager goes finds different people to do different things. Right? Or subcontractor, whatever you want to call it.
They would do, so they would, they wouldn't be subcontractors or titled such trade con, they're titled trade contractors. So for example, uh, let's say you have an HVAC contractor in there in Grafton or nearby that would be capable of doing the HVAC work. For the project. Under a CM. CM agent. There would be an independent bid package that would go out specifically for HVAC. And multiple HVAC contractors would bid that. Okay? Under the other two models. That HVAC contractor could be coming from Fargo, it could be coming from Minnesota, that could be coming from somewhere else. Outside of Grafton or. It may not be the people that you thought you were going to get, but it's. But you got to remember, the other two are holding the risk, so they're gonna stack their deck to the best of their abilities to make sure that they're successful on the project. Um.
On a time basis, is the at risk probably? More consistent, get it done quicker than the other ones? Cause sometimes when you get a lot of the agents, I mean, they get. I'm just going different jobs, then everything gets delayed. So which which one of those are more timely, I guess, or on spot?
Well. Um, first of all, if it's apples to apples, the drawings are coming out at the exact same time. They should all be. Same schedules. I would say your hard bid is gonna be the most aggressive, right? Because the everything is time and money, but. Um, I would say that all three of them are gonna be coming out of about the same. Um. What I do like about the construction management side is if we wanted to do an early. Site package or an early demolition package, or if we wanted to buy equipment sooner. Uh, we have the ability to do that. Where we would not have the ability to do it under the general contractor. So let's say, for example, um. We want to prep the site, so maybe we want to do that before winter is is an example. Um, the architect could put together um the site drawings, we could bid out just the site work, we could actually start it sooner. Than waiting for the drawings to be a hundred percent complete to where we would go out for bid then. So it would actually. In our scenario, would move things along quicker or have the potential to.
So Sid, you said you've worked as you guys, your company has done all three of these?
Every one of them, no. Yes, we have.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Jason, I didn't know.
Like. By century, you know, if I remember right, the in North Dakota, we have to bid it per general contractor. But the same point then for your building destruction, your mechanic, when your electrical all have to have options to bid it. If you add up those three and they're lower than your general contractor, you need to use a three contractors. We did this on multiple visitor centers throughout the state of North Dakota, wherever proximity renovation, we go for the bids. So that's the century code. Peace for boom construction.
Sid, could you hear Jason?
I didn't quite hear it all, but um. You might want to repeat that or.
Yeah.
Do you want to come up full, sir, Jason?
If I remember right, by century code, Sid, in North Dakota, when we go for bids for buildings. We have to have the option for your general contractor, they'll do it all. But if you're electrical, your HVAC and your building all come underneath the general contractor. You're required to use the three different contractors, even if they've never worked together, which makes it miserable. But. Then your general contractor becomes the prime.
Yeah, that's. Wouldn't do that. Um. Well, I'll give you, so you ready for my opinion?
Yes. We are.
So.
I have any other questions or can you let Sid? Okay, let's go with your opinion, Sid.
So considering what we've went through over the last couple of years. Um. I would, it would be down to a general contractor, uh, hard bid. Or be a CM agent. And the reason why I would say the agent is because of the transparency in the community. I think uh. Knowing that a local electrical, a lo- local HVAC, the board updates. Uh, where where things are going, I think that transparency is probably the most valuable thing out of these three delivery models. Um, the general con, the same with the agent and the general contractor. I will tell you this, everything is hard, is competitively bid. So the mechanicals would be a hundred percent hard bid. In both scenarios. So the county is getting the lowest price. It's just a ma- it's a matter of how it's being delivered.
So you're saying. You said.
Considering transparency. Go ahead.
You said the general contractor hard bid or? Or the one construction manager as agent? Those were your two recommendations?
Yeah, my my. My first would be the agent, and the reason being is that it brings the. Your expertise. In with the design. It also brings transparency to the community so that. Everybody wants to know what's going on. And considering what we've just went through with the referendum. I think the more transparency, the better off we all are in that scenario.
Mm hmm.
Um, I don't like the CM at risk because it it. It basically brings everything under one scenario. It's not very transparent. Uh, can't guarantee you're getting the absolute lowest price or not. Um, the general contractor. Um, that's all about the low number. At the end of the day, if you want a low number. Uh, it's all about low numbers when it comes to that general contractor. You just don't know what their experience is going to be. So if you can take experience. You can keep it competitive, you can keep it transparent. Um, I think your construction manager agent is is a way to go. But.
Okay.
That is your your guys' choice, not my choice. It's just simply my opinion, and I wanted to make sure you had all three. Options in front of you so that you understood what those were. Um. I do believe in the CM process because I think that the more planning you can do upfront. Uh, the better off and the smoother a project will go. Uh, nothing's worse than getting a bid on having it over budget. I've had those happen to me. Uh, and having to go back and rebid areas or rebid a project is terrible. So.
Okay, so it sounds like construction manager as agent is finding the top.
Would be my, would be mine, but again, I don't want to be. Too pushy, but. Considering what you just went through, I mean. I'd want as much transparency as I possibly could bring to the public, um, good and bad, right? At least they know exactly what's going on and. That would probably be my. In that scenario, it would probably be my recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. I I think Jason had something here for you.
Yeah, we, I had Kelly take a look um. At the bid requirements with respect to the engineer architect and what we. We need to, per the century code forty eight dash oh one point two dash oh four. We will need to request for proposals or invitation of bid for the architect services and consider reply. Um. We can have costs of services as a factor in deciding from the architect selection, which is new, because at one point in time you cannot do that, but the Supreme Court has ruled on that. But we still should have a qualification based election by looking at the proposals. And consider the past performance, reputation, et cetera. So when we get to the point where we're hiring contractors, we do have the options to throw people out if they have zero experience for it.
Yeah, typically in the specifications. Jason, we'll put in there specifically like with the detention contractors and some of the specialty contractors. Uh, there'll be language in there about a number of projects they've completed the years they've been doing this, things like that to help substantiate that so that we don't end up with somebody who shouldn't be there.
Questions?
Guess I'd like to talk to both Grand Parks and Milltown Valley City and see what they did with their burners coming into this. See how they did.
Okay.
Yeah, and these aren't, I mean, you don't have to make a vote on this today. This is something that I'm just presenting to you and you can decide what you want to do and. Uh, how you want people to participate, but.
Amy, so when you're Jason saying you said the general contractor that we have to consider, but so that. We we can't consider the construction manager as agent, that said.
You can, we can consider those things too, but we just have to verify with them, because at one point, send it to them, like that stuff.
I believe that you're. I believe the counties you talked about, well, talk with them, but I believe that they use the CM process. Typically, the the CM as an agent is a hired professional. Okay, so then the competitiveness, the bidding process happens, still happens. Publicly, all the bids come to the county. It's just a matter of hiring somebody to help manage that process for you. They're an agent or a professional service.
Okay, someone to guide us through and yeah. It's. Right.
The federal government uses it, we use it, I think, every state we've operated in. So it is not something new. It is is simply hiring an agent to help you through the process and and. Bid it out and help manage and run the project.
Okay. Great information. Appreciate your help on this.
You bet.
Uh. We'll do a little bit of checking here. I would like to. Just to be quick, want to keep this project moving. So is this something that we could have the jail committee look into? Um. Would everyone be fine with that? I think we need to assign it to someone or else it'll get left hanging, right?
The big, the big thing that I wanted to point out too is part of that packet is I had attached two schedules. So going through the RFP process, you're gonna wanna. You want to expect that expedite that the best you can. And and the reason being is that if you look at uh. Let's see, it's line item fifteen, it's the bids due. Do you see that on one of the, there's two of them. There's a no RP and there's an RP. And what I was looking at, and then. Again, I was just simply saying you'd went through the process of getting an architect. Yeah, already to help us through the referendum. Um, we've been there as well. But I wanted you to look at the bids due because that's what's most important. I don't. How you go about this process and what you want to do. Uh, for timing, you can, you know, you can set that up, but the two are examples. Um, in a two month delay, because typically in our P process, um. It takes time because you have got to put it together, you send it out. Uh, architects, CMs, whoever you have coming. Are gonna need time to respond. You're probably gonna interview them and then ultimately make a decision and and enter into contract. Where I want to go with this. Is. We need to bid this project out uh in February and March. And talking with Dave from Elavatus. He says that he needed six to seven months. To get it designed. Which means we're right up against that window. And that's a pretty fair time to get something like this designed and ready for bid. And then you have about a month worth of bidding. But what we don't want to do is get ourselves in a position where we're. We have people bidding this project and it's in May, late May, June. That is a terrible time to bid a project because everybody's looking for their work. For the year in February, they're not, if it's June. Lot of people have already filled up or, you know, their. Their year is pretty much set, and I don't want to be. I don't want to see our project coming in at that time because that's that's gonna be some budget challenges, I have a feeling. So this next phase of getting your architect. Getting your CM or whatever you want to do, decision made. Um, the most important is getting that architect moving, to be honest. Get that resolved, get the architect moving. Um. Lots of people do architectural interviews and CM interviews at the same time if they choose to go in the direction of a CM. Um, but expedite. That process is going to be critical because you can see by a two month delay what that does to your overall bid dates. And that's what was most important to me last time when we were presenting.
Thanks. That's good to know. Thank you. Appreciate that. You brought that up to us again.
Running into this month, that is really what it looks like.
Um, great.
Yeah. I believe it is.
I know it doesn't give you guys much time, and I I again, I think you need to know that, though. Cause if we think we have a couple of months to get this done, you can see what happens with your bid cycle and. You know. The budget, the budget's everything on this. And if we find that we hit that thing at the wrong time. That can mean, you know, think about that five percent is one point two million dollars, right? One million, two fifty. We showed it on the inflation. If we miss that and that's a five percent increase. That's a, that's a big number just by how we got it designed and got it out the door.
Right.
So it is very important.
Ron, this is.
Yes. We need to get it over, yes, yeah.
So.
Okay.
All right.
We'll get on top of it. Thank you very much, Sid. Anything else?
Not for me. I think if you guys got questions, you let me know, or I know Jason will reach out if he needs some help. And so. We'll be here to help you the best we can and and go from there.
Okay, well, thank you very much. You guys have been great to work with and appreciate all your help.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Thank you.
Have a great day. Bye.